Go ahead and start our meeting if you can join me in the present pleasure of meetings.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So essentially, the reason that we called this meeting was because we didn't have a chance to really come to any resolution on how we were going to handle the additional prosecutor secretary within the prosecutor's office. I was hoping that we would have Nick here this afternoon to talk to him.
He's in jury trial.
Okay. I would just say, and sorry, I didn't bring all my files with me today. Thought I did, but I didn't always, so. Just want to look at last week's agenda to see what specifically was on the agenda.
I was not at that meeting when this all took place. Can somebody give me a recap?
What?
Very evening. At what age?
Yeah.
Could we go over a recap of discussing this?
Yeah, quick one.
Yeah, so essentially, there are a couple of things that transpired. I believe you recall Nick came in and told us that he was gonna need an additional secretary to handle duties related to the trial. We already have one, or we previously in 22 had one prosecutor secretary and a salary assigned. He was gonna hire a second one. We were very clear that that would be a full-time temporary position for the duration of the trial. He suggested that in order to get the right person, he had somebody lined up, an external candidate, but they were going to need 5,000 more than what we're paying the current secretary in that position.
And his presentation was that they were making $10,000 more now, but they would accept $5,000 more. They were making $10,000 more in their current position, they would accept $5,000.
So I reached out to Kent Irwin's office and said, if the job descriptions are the same and we bring somebody new on, am I correct, or what's our liability? If we either pay them both the same wage for the same job description, or we pay one more and one at their current, understanding that the one that we would pay more is temporary for the duration of the trial. And they said, no, you can't. If it's the same job description, you have to pay them the same rate. So we agreed to increase both prosecuting secretaries the $5,000. What's transpired is that he's not hired somebody externally. He's moved somebody that was an existing employee over into this newly created position. So I reached out, so that's where we're at. And there were also some concerns about hire dates, and I think you had some questions. I don't know if you got the opportunity to get those answered or not.
No.
Okay.
We found out that the girl in the office was taking the position when I saw it posted, her job posted on bulletin board, which we didn't know about. And that happened, it was an unusual circumstance. One of the girls that I knew just gave it back to her board, put it down on the bulletin board. So that did happen. But the girl, okay, so Heather is over there, I shouldn't say that. The secretary's there, and then the other girl that was the clerical assistant, he hired her. And it had been posted, then, but he hired her the same day that this all was decided. But we did not know it. And HR should know when somebody is hired, and they need to know it that day. Okay? But I was coming back from somewhere, I don't know, but I saw it posted on the bulletin board. So I asked my HR person. She said she didn't know about that. So she went over there and asked, and was explained that, you know, the other one didn't take this, so she took this. She's taking this job. Well, we didn't get anything, any paperwork. So it was dated on February the 8th, which was the date that we guys first decided on this. Didn't get the offer of employment until February 17th, and this date was February the 8th. We just, the paperwork is not mine enough, and I just need to know what day am I supposed to start these people on my path? So we talked to, so the internal girl is now in the position with the $5,000 more, and her job is now empty. So is she going to take this job until the other one's over, and then is she planning on going back? That's not up for us to decide. I mean, because that job is temporary. That would be something that Nick would have to decide, and when the body's here deciding, no one needs to expect. You'd have to have to rehire her, or she'd have to reapply.
But knowing that technically both positions are temporary. Well, one position is temporary, the trial secretary for the duration of the trial. The other is prominent, but we've moved the two in there.
So I have several different dates that I could choose from, but actually, the offer of employment was filed on February 17th. But then actually, two, you got, the council decided to do this process, but they did not actually do the additional correctly. And we didn't have the money to do that yet, so we had to advertise one again. So that was on the 16th, and I told prosecutor's office that until after the 16th, I wasn't going to pay out the extra money.
What date did we both change it on salary ordinance?
February 8th.
I, I, I don't think that we could, I mean, the salary ordinance and the budget are not the same. So I don't think that we could do anything except, unless we gave a date at that meeting, which I don't recall off the top of my head. I would say it would've been effective immediately upon hire than as soon as the role was filled.
You said that, effectively?
I mean, so if we voted on the 8th to make the salary change, and, oh wait, excuse me. If we voted on the 8th to amend the salary ordinance, and we didn't say a date, I would say that those are effective immediately.
So the girl that is here.
Regardless of whether it was funded or not.
I would say we gave the $5,000 based on the statement that this individual, we were going to give $5,000 more, had a lot of prior experience that would help in position, that position. That person did not take that job, so I think we're back to, I don't know, about $5,000 already.
So, and I, I will speak to this, not to cut you off, Josh, but I will speak to what Doc just said. I reached out to Kent Irwin's office and spoke with them today in regards to that. We have full authority to give or take away salary increases. There's no liability, as long as internal pay equity stays the same, meaning they're doing the same job on the same job description. It is a function of the council to set county employee wages. And so there's no liability that Irwin's office could speak to if we would decide to, to back off that $5,000 increase.
Is the lady that is here, and it's already her job to do, does she, is, once the discussion ended at the meeting when I was out there, is that to, is she going to lose that $5,000 when the trial's over and go back to the old wage? Or does she assume she's gonna always keep that $5,000?
Well, I mean, this is what we need clarity on. I don't know who is in what role, but let's just say there is a prosecutor's secretary and there is a secretary for the investigation, so.
No, I'm talking to one that's already a prosecutor.
Both already here.
No, I mean, I mean the one that's good in here that you're not hired, the one that is not going to be temporary.
Right.
Is she gonna go back when the trial's over, $5,000 left?
And this is what we need clarity on today, is who is, who is acting in that capacity? Because there's not a name associated with that job yet, this is part of that.
Can I answer my question?
Because I don't, no one can answer the question, because we don't know who is in what role at this time. And that's what we're, that's what this is about today, to figure that out.
So when you guys decided to give the $5,000, you didn't discuss whether the already employed was gonna go back? You just discussed that the temporary person was going to leave it?
We didn't know that it was an already employed. It was on the pretense that a third party, not a.
But, but what she's saying is the incumbent employee that was already doing that job.
She's not gonna leave.
And got the bump because we were going to hire an external candidate and give them the bump.
Right.
Does that incumbent employee then go revert back once the trial's over? My answer to that question is, we, my understanding was we left it open-ended, because we always address salaries at budget time. And so we were going to leave that open-ended and revisit it once the trial was done, and we were ready for a new budget cycle when we assess salaries again. I don't know that that was explicitly stated, but that was my intention, and I thought understood by, by the council, so.
Let me ask, you stated previously that the job descriptions for the incumbent and the job description for the new person were exactly the same, is that correct?
I was too.
The new role?
Yes.
Okay.
Job description, yes.
Okay.
The job description were the same for both roles.
Okay.
And can we just use the right grammar, the most mistake I made with that job, it's not legal secretary.
It's a prosecutor's secretary.
Prosecutor's secretary. So there are now two prosecutor's secretaries. One is for the investigation and one is for the prosecutor's office. And they are the exact same job description.
I can kind of agree with Doc. If I would've been here at that meeting, I would've never bothered to put this through. Because it sounds like to me that somebody came and told Nick what they wanted to work for. And I don't think that's how we should hire, is that we're gonna give somebody more money because they say they want a job, they want this price to come work.
Well, it was an extraordinary circumstance, and we acknowledge that exact thing. It's like, what were we gonna do? We have, we have a million pages or some ridiculous number of papers that we have to provide the court, county, has to provide the court for this investigation, and there's no way to do it.
And you could've posted a job description, posted a job?
We had posted the job, and money was a constraint. So that, I mean, we had, I mean, it was post us, like, we have nobody, we leave the pay the same. We have a person ready to go tomorrow if the pay sticks.
Oh, obviously, it didn't.
We gave.
Not here.
That's the reason we're here.
We gave the $5,000 raise under false pretense, because we wouldn't want if this person had experience in this field. We needed somebody right now, and that, that's why I was for giving them the $5,000.
Yeah, I agree.
And this has not happened, so I think we should go back to $5,000. That $5,000 stipend should come up, and that's my feeling.
I agree.
And you're talking about the prosecutor's secretary, is correct.
I'm talking about both, and now, because we may, had to make.
Well, I'm just, I want to make sure what you're saying, we gave the $5,000 raise to the prosecutor's secretary, and then we gave $5,000 each to the prosecutor and the deputy prosecutor.
Now, you have two prosecuting secretaries.
I agree, that's what I said.
Why are you, why are you throwing in a prosecutor and a prosecutor?
Because they got the same $5,000.
Because we gave them a $5,000 raise also.
Right. But I just want to make sure.
Which we had to do with Kent Irwin, Kent Irwin's office was what we had to do, and I agree with that.
Well, no, but he said the $5,000 raise, and I'll just clarify, he's talking about the prosecutor's secretary's $5,000 and not the prosecutor's $5,000. I just want to make sure that we're talking the same thing.
Well, that's, I'm talking about $5,000 for both of them.
Yeah, both the secretaries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
There's, there's two sets of, there's two sets of.
This whole discussion is just about secretaries, not about anybody else.
No, no, you're right.
So let me ask, the $5,000 at the February 8th meeting was only for the investigation secretary? The $5,000 increase was only, it didn't go to both positions?
Went to both secretaries.
It went to both secretaries, okay? I thought it was just for the investigation rate.
Now, is the rub with the Irwin's office advising stuff, we had to pay them the same?
Okay. Handsing back to the job description.
Okay.
Yeah. And the same is true, if we take, if we take that $5,000 increase back, if we reduce the salary ordinance by that $5,000, back to its original spot, which was, I think, 41 and something, or right in that range.
41, 763 is what I got.
Then we have to do it for both employees under that same job description, right?
So you're back at position one, which also nobody applied.
That is correct, but now that both are filled at.
Well, you don't know that. Is this other, is this person gonna stay, or because the, they're both filled. Because the one that's empty now is not filled. I'm just saying, if you take $5,000 away from her, is she still going to want to stay in that job?
Well, I think, I mean, that's a question that I think we, I think at some point, we need to hear from Nick here shortly, but, and, I'm sorry. Do you have court or is anything that we're bumping up against?
I'm okay for a little bit here.
Because you don't know what she's gonna say. If you're gonna walk out of here and she's gonna learn that she's getting $5,000 left, so that's a question for her to say, she may not want to stay.
Yeah, I think that's the whole question.
Plus, it's temporary. So why stay, you know, that's a question for her, but I'm just saying, you have to look at, she may go back to her old position, which I think Beth just said is not filled, right? As far as I know, it's not.
Any other discussion amongst us before we invite the prosecutor to come and speak?
I, I will say this, and this is just my, my thoughts. I think all of us are aware that her workload has increased probably substantially. As you said, you know, thousands upon thousands of pages of things that need to be done. I wouldn't mind seeing a small increase or a small temporary increase for the investigatory secretary. But I think her original position in the prosecutor's office should, well, they, they both would have to be the same, because it's the same job description.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's the.
Yeah, and you can, you know, you can, we could say as a body that once this trial is ended, and we do away with that temporary position, and we just have one secretary again, we would go back to the salary that we, that was there in 2022 previous. The issue with that, though, is that in all reality, this trial probably won't start until '24. And then your next budget cycle won't be until late '24 for '25. So at what point then are you, are you really talking about, like, a cost of living increase over those two years that would eat up that $5,000 anyway? You know what I mean? There's, there's some, in my mind, there's some nuance here that just saying, well, we would take it back once the trial's over, doesn't really answer. So, you know, we've got to, we've gotta take that into consideration as well, because.
I'm not understanding. You have a position, you have a position, and then you're hiring another one to help that position release the load. So I'm not understanding why you're wanting to up the salaries. It's not like they're both gonna be, have double or triple work.
Okay, well, the reason is because we were told we needed to up the salary to hire this external candidate.
Yes.
With previous experience, which.
That was the conversation. And so that was the lever that was pulled to initiate the $5,000 raise.
Anybody that applies for a job in the courthouse, and if they have previous experience, you're gonna jack on $3,000, $5,000?
I think, Tracy, I think you have to acknowledge that we're in a bad position at the trial. I mean, I mean, do you understand the urgency of why, why this was an urgent hire?
I guess, but it didn't work out for you, so.
Well, and I agree, and that's why we're here, but like, the decision was made because we were in, I mean, we're between a rock and a hard place. We had to make a decision, and that decision cost us $10,000. We acknowledged what we were doing, and we said that we, it wasn't like a best case scenario by any stretch, but it had to be done, or we aren't going to be able to, to effectively prosecute this case. And if, and if.
Can you really say that, Nick? You don't have these two secretaries, you're not gonna be able to fully prosecute this case?
I mean, it's a hard question to answer, I don't know. I'm definitely, I'm definitely, you know, I think between a rock and a hard place, because of the lack of staff, the lack of resources. The defense has unlimited resources, essentially. They can ask the judge for what they need, and the judge will make that decision, but they don't have to get approval from anybody but the judge. And so whatever resources they ask for, if the judge believes are reasonable, they're gonna get approved for. And it could be putting me at a disadvantage, it absolutely could. I can't say that at will, it's too hard to say right now.
Are, are both current secretaries doing investigation work?
Both, like, there's only one that's moved.
Right.
The one that never moved, they're both.
Are they both performing functions relating to the trial?
Yes, they're both working here and out at the investigative center for the everlasting investigation, both of them. Because that's just what I have to do. And then we have a part-time gal that's working here part-time, and the rest of the time, either I'm answering the phone, or Shane is, or my investigator, whoever's available to run the office essentially. And so we've just been trying to kind of patchwork and put people where we can to get everything done that we need to.
I want to clarify something that you asked about the pay. The clerical assistant that moved up would've gotten 20, I mean, if she gets that $5,000 also, it's 2498 from her 1669 dollar. So I think if she didn't have that, she would go back to the 2231, and if, you know, that's what Heather is making, or the one that's saying that now, who's saying that, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. So if she's not to take the job back, I think she would take that job back. She's probably gonna leave the position.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, either way, she, she got a really good raise for stepping up and owning that job. It was 16, she was making 1669 as a first clerk.
And what was the hourly rate before we paid the increase?
For which one?
For the secretary.
2231.
So I mean, if we didn't have the $5,000 raises, it's still a $6 hour gain.
Right. That's what I was trying to get across.
Yeah.
So I don't think she's gonna move it, I think she would stay. But that's my personal opinion too.
I'd say you're. I'd say you're suggesting there may lose eleven, that's unfair to everybody.
I'll, I mean, this, this is a risk, like, we cannot afford to mess up the trial, period. All the resources have to be there. Now, what we can debate is whether it's worth risking five or $10,000 to accomplish that. That's a fair, that's a fair debate, but like, we all need to keep in mind here. The thing that has to happen is this case has to go through the process, be adjudicated, and resource constraints cannot, we cannot be the story about why this case was not adjudicated properly. Okay, so like, let's just, I mean, I think we have to keep the end goal in mind, that all the resources are there for this case to go smoothly, and for us to do everything that the court asks of us, asks of the prosecutor's office to, so that they have the resources to comply with that. So like, I'm, I'm, anything is on the table, but if we do anything to compromise that mission, I think we do it to our detriment, and both fiscally and morally. So that's just my two cents on that.
You guys had appropriated, I don't know, a couple million or something originally for the trial. Does he not have access to that money that if he needed to hire additional people to help with some of the things, that he can do that, just like what we had approached?
This is coming out of that money, baby. All of this is coming, all of this is, all of this is coming out of that bucket.
If he needs more help, does he have to come to you guys to get that help, or has he just hired somebody?
Well, if he was hiring a new role, he would have to come to us, but if it's, if it's, I mean, all of that money is in there for the, for the prosecution and the defense of the trial.
Yeah, I think she's right. One investigator and one secretary, the additional that we approved are what's coming out of that trial.
Right, the only thing that's coming out of county general is the $5,000 raise for the prosecutor's secretary. Everything else is coming out of the trial.
But, but the process is the same, it's gotta come here else.
I was just curious.
One year's salaries for now, county general. Prosecutor's office.
The one that has always been, so the only incremental new cost, okay, to county general is the $5,000 raise.
Yep. I would just bring this up and correct me if I'm wrong, but these are the figures from the '23 budget. First deputies were making $38,086, and the prosecutor's secretary was making 41, 763. Does that sound correct, Ed? And those are the figures I've, so, I mean, technically, she was already making $3,000 more versus a bunch back then. Just five and five.
And we've talked about that many times at the courts and the prosecutor's office because of their.
Inhalers.
Well, it's not the importance, it's the training, it's like, they're, I mean, they're, they're being similar to a, a labor shed from a paralegal or a legal secretary. Is that accurate, Nick? Your prosecutor's.
Yeah, they're essentially, they are.
Yeah.
She's not a paralegal, she's not creating documents.
Thank you. The.
She is creating documents, actually.
But not like legal documents, like a paralegal does.
She is, actually, she's filing motions for me, she's drafting motions dismissed, appeals.
Please, this is not a, please. I'm glad you're here, and you have a good point, but let's just, and sorry, Tim, I'm actually.
That's fine, can you go ahead?
So one point I would like to make, it's two years, this body has always said, when you not pay the person, we pay the job, for the job description. We don't pay for the person, we pay for the job description. If these two people have the same job description, and the current secretary was working for the amount she was working for, and she'd been working down at the center for that amount prior to him asking for the raise for the person that he wanted to come here to have the experience, but did not come, then why do we need to give them a $5,000 raise? Because she was working in that position and doing that job. And the girl that's moving up from the assistant's position is gonna get a $10,000 raise to go up to that prosecutor's secretary position. So I don't understand why there's even a question here. We don't pay for the person, we pay for the job description. And that's been stated in this body several times over.
That's true, we have said that with us. Any, Nick, do you have any, anything to bring to this discussion? There's been several questions thrown out that.
Sure, I can answer any questions, I don't know if I remember them all. There was just one temporary spot, I guess I got a little confused at this part. There was one gal at my house that has. There's one gal in my house that hasn't moved, that's always.
So if, if you show up, make sure we get you on the record.
Okay.
And I would also like to say for the record, Paul Ryder and Ethan Brown have.
So your original girl that you have that has worked that position, she's worked for that amount, and then the girl that you wanted to hire in did not come, and so the question is, are we removing the five thousand dollars from both positions? And Josh seems to think that if, Josh seems to think that if we do, that we're going to, the trial.
No, I didn't say that, I, I wanna say, before we act, we need to look at, look at it through that lens, of, of the consequence.
Well, I can't look at the lens.
That's why I said we need to hear from Nick.
And so I guess, what are your feelings on that?
You know, I don't know, I really hope, like, I told her before, that the other gal would come here, and at the eleventh hour, she backed out, and so I'm stuck where I'm at. Everybody in my office has been working really hard to get everything done and accomplish what we need to. It's really hard, because I don't know what the future's gonna bring, I don't know how many hearings we're gonna have before the trial. I know we have a couple set now, I don't know, you know, at this point, I don't know how many witnesses we're gonna have, but it's gonna be in the hundreds. And as we get closer and further down the line, it's just, it's gonna take a lot of work and a lot of coordination to remember in my office, and I don't know, I don't know if, what we have, we can handle, I won't know until I get there, and that's, the hard part is to try to determine.
So the temporary position, I don't know, even though she's gonna get this five thousand dollars more, I guess I question, it's temporary, as soon as the trial is over, she's gonna be unemployed. So that's my question, I mean, is she gonna go back, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know. If you don't give her the five thousand dollars, is she gonna go back to her old position? Because she's gonna be unemployed in, hopefully, in two years, I mean, I hope the trial will go on forever, I mean.
I don't know, no, we, we, I had a long discussion with her about there's risk, right? There's risk, there's increased pay, but there's increased risk too, because if, if it ends tomorrow, let's just say it ended tomorrow, for whatever reason, you know, that your job would end, and it was worth the risk for her to, to take the increase if we take it back. I haven't talked to her about that, so I don't, I don't.
So she, so it is because she, the increase is a five thousand dollar. You see what I'm saying, I'm afraid that if she took the five thousand dollars, she's going to go back to her old job, because, well, even if we took, took away the five thousand, and I'm not one way or the other here, but, but, I'm just saying that if sixteen sixty-nine is what she had, and the old secretary, I'm gonna say that way, is named twenty-two twenty-three, she's still going to make almost five dollars an hour or even more anyway. Because she told the trial's over, and then she's gone.
But those two have to be paid the same. But that's her property, that she wants to, to take that risk, I mean, he's explained it.
Could we look at renewing the five thousand dollars, and Nick just stated, he doesn't know what's gonna happen in the future? Address a potential third person, or a part-time third person, somewhere down the road, when the need arises?
I think we have, we have it in the budget for part-time labor, so it would just have to be utilized, I mean, he has a part-time line, right?
Or that part timer.
That's Phil.
Yes, it's Phil, and then he'll still have that clerical assistant. Position.
Right, I think I'm fucking. Short term, I mean, but to answer your question is yes, if any of those things are possible, you might take action from the council to say, you, you have been authorized for one part-time person, and now you have authorization for two, or you have authorization for, you know, so many hours. Any of that's possible.
Just what I was trying to say is, he has authorization for another clerical assistant, because it's in the budget.
In his office.
In his office, right.
Right, but I mean, I, I would assume that everything that was in his office is still needed to run the office.
Right, but I'm just saying, there's a man in the body there that could still help out if needed.
And he just said that his little office, it works, is going out to the investigation center, and they're not just staying on those cases, I mean, they're all working on everything.
We, we have to at this point, because we've only got two full-time people, two full-time secretaries, then, of course, Shane and I, and we have our other caseloads in court part of it, and then the investigator's out there full-time, and then we did have another investigator, but he's kind of been answering the phone a lot for us, because we've had everybody out there working on the Everly stuff, or the, sorry, it's the MR, I can't remember.
MR one.
MR one.
So, go ahead, Doc.
Yeah.
What, what is, two five thousand dollars in court, so would that come out of the three million or not?
Half and half.
One was, one was not. One went and one went on.
One's budget of. In the twenty twenty-three.
The, I'm sorry.
Uh, I just wanna say, you know, the clerk's office, if the prosecutor's office is getting a lot more stuff, that all trickles down to my office, so my office staff is working harder too, because now we're fulfilling all of this stuff from the murder trial. I'm not here asking for more money, I'm just stating that it's not just his office that's working more. We get sometimes, and I'm not exaggerating, twelve, fifteen emails a day from news organizations wanting all of these documents, and now we have to stop what we're doing and provide those documents.
I get all those same emails too.
I'm starting to get those.
So, I mean, it's, it's not just his office that's increased, and I have no more staff. We just make it work, we do it. It means I stay after five o'clock to finish it, I stay after five and finish it.
This is a rough, this is a rough one, because, I mean, I see, you know, from other people's view, that it's, it's not fair that just because of this special circumstance that they're gonna get five thousand dollars more, then I see, I don't want the trial to go unfunded.
MR.
Yeah. But Nick can't foresee the future, so he stood there and said, I don't, he doesn't know if it will affect it or not. And believe it or not, we're gonna be budgeting in another four months, are we going to add more money onto this temporary position in that position and keep moving them up, or, because when the trial's over, she's gonna go back, and also that down the line, so we're also making the decisions.
I guess my question still goes back to, if, if Nick had not come to you and asked for the additional five thousand dollars for the person he thought he was going to hire, that had all the experience, if that did not happen, then that request for the five thousand dollars should go away, because he's using somebody that currently works in his office, he's not getting somebody that has experience that's worked in a prosecutor's office, or in an attorney's office, or something prior to that. So with years of experience, so, in my opinion, that five thousand dollars should go away, because that did not come to fruition, that's not what happened, so if he needs to come at a later day and ask for another part-time person to help out with some, going through files and stuff, then that should happen, but the five thousand dollars for those two positions should not go through.
Wonder.
Maybe you should look at it this way, Tracy, the way you were concerned about the gal, we'll just call her Person B, who was in the office, in the clerical assistant, if she decides to step back, because you take the five thousand dollars away, she's still gonna be there, so if she stays, then it's gonna be Person B and Person A, who's always there, and a new person who comes in as a clerical assistant. But if she walks away and goes back to the lower job, it's, it's not a bad thing, because he's still gonna have, he's still gonna have a position to fill, in fact, he'll be recruiting someone for a twenty-two dollar an hour job instead of a sixteen. So I don't see how you can lose if you take away the four, five thousand dollars, because if she goes back to the original position, he's still gonna, he'll have more money to recruit the new person, so you're still gonna have the same people and, and vacancies.
So Person B is already from your office?
I thought it was from a media office.
No?
We tried to get it from another office, but it wasn't enough pay, she was making fifty-one thousand in her current job, and she.
The external.
The external, and she said, it's just not enough to, you know, that, that's why.
The girl that, the girl that took the job was already from your office in the courthouse, she was from like, Treasury Office or other.
No, she was the most experienced out of the applications.
So she won't be going back to, okay, that makes a lot more sense now, okay.
She was the most experienced out of the applications we had, that's.
Did you advertise the jo, I'm sorry.
We did, yeah, we put it on Indeed, and we got.
No, did, at, did you advertise it at the original pay rate ever?
I don't think so, I'd have to go back and look, because I, I don't do the hourly, I always do it as a salary, and so I'm not sure how we advertised it. We advertised it at the, at the old, without the five thousand dollars?
Right.
I'd have to look at that, I don't know that answer. I thought we advertised it with the five thousand. I can't remember either.
My recollection was that you had, you had.
Five thousand until February eighth, and he had an already post.
Okay, so maybe we did the old one then, I don't know.
I thought that, that was my recollection, is you had no, no applications at the forty-one.
No, we, we got a bunch of applications, but, not people that I feel comfortable hiring in my office for sensitive information like this.
Oh, I see.
There's nobody that I felt was qualified to, to take the job, I mean, just no experience at all.
Yeah. This, okay, that's what you're saying.
So in addition to the salary, what other questions do we need to, like, what are the procedural questions that we need to have answered today? Because this was on our agenda last Thursday.
I need to know what date I'm supposed to start losing this, because of the dates that, it was dated February seventh, and then February eighth, and. But if we take away the five thousand, then there is no, and the money wasn't advertised to show you. So, yeah, there'll be no change.
Well, the, the budget and the salary, it's, we're so early in the year, it's kind of, but it doesn't matter.
I'm protecting myself.
I just want to make sure we address all the questions.
No, and so this is my question to the prosecutor, have you advertised the, the current vacancy?
No.
So, what, uh, what's that position called, the, the now vacant position?
Clarify.
The clerical, I think it's posted downstairs on.
Maybe it is, I don't know, I kind of lost track, because we don't know, well, so it may be posted, but I haven't been still.
So have you had, do you have any applications at the current pay rate for that job? Or, are you close to filling that position?
No, we haven't done, I've stopped everything, because we didn't know where, there were so many questions with the pay. And so I didn't do, wanna do anything else, because we just, there were so many questions, and Beth and I, about how we're gonna do the pay, and how it's gonna work, and so I didn't feel comfortable hiring somebody else. I don't know if the person I have in the temporary spot is gonna want to move back down to her spot, she may want to move back down to that. I, I don't know, I haven't had that conversation.
Either way, he's gotta hire a position.
Right, and the question is, if we reduce it, so, I see, there, there, I'll, I'll, I'll make a hypothetical, okay? We, we reduce the pay, that we take away the five thousand, the, the.
Temporary.
The temporary position moves back to her old position, and now we have to hire a investigator. Can we hire, I mean, so we're back to the primary question that we had before, can we hire that person at the five thousand dollar lower pay?
Right.
We, we're right back to the same question we started, I don't know, but, I mean, I don't have an answer.
If you, you have, if he hired, needs to hire a clerical assistant, I mean, what if you get somebody that says, hey, I'll take that job, and I want this much money? Same thing.
But, well, yeah, I, I, I don't know, but, I mean, so, like, the reason that we, we made this job was to fulfill the obligation of the county in this murder trial. So if we reduce the pay, and we can't fill that job, we are not doing what we said we are here to do.
I think you put a price, you put a, a price on that amount, because he had a person that said that would come work for that, he didn't say it was purposely for the trial, it was purposely to hire this.